Thank you.
Call meeting in order, roll call please.
Ms. Spears?
Here.
Mr. Bennet?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Chaucie?
Here.
Reverend Custer?
Here.
Mr. Johnston?
Here.
Ms. Lugo?
Here.
Mr. Staborski?
Here.
Mr. Valeski?
Here.
My pleasure to lead this through the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please state, remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Number three, the approval of minutes resolved that the Penncrest Board of School Directors approved the following minutes, September 3rd, 2024, September 9th, 2024. On the 3rd, that was a school board work session. On the 9th, that was a school board meeting.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried.
Under presentations tonight, the first presentation is One Federal Credit Union. I'm going to turn over to Mr. Baker to do that.
Thank you. It's my pleasure tonight to welcome several members of the One Federal Credit Union team that kind of made this possible. The wish committee members would be Amber Hall, who is also a Sagertown grad, Samantha Smith, and Diana Chess, also a Sagertown grad. And now I'd like to read a little bit about their current CEO. Heather has been the CEO of One Federal Credit Union for the past 24 years. Her passion of changing the lives of members she serves holds true to the mission of credit union philosophy of people helping people. One Federal Credit Union was founded in 1949 and is celebrating their 75th anniversary this year. As part of their celebration, they are granting 75 wishes throughout Crawford and Mercer Counties. The Penncrest School District is fortunate to be receiving two of their 75 wishes. The first wish to be granted is the Penncrest-Sagertown Combined Cambridge Springs Soccer Team Scoreboard sponsorship. The second wish to be granted is for the Maplewood Elementary School to have board games and other materials for their indoor recess times. Heather, if you'd like to say a few words?
Hello everyone. It's actually an honor to be here. And it was quite exciting. Back in 2011 when we opened our office in Sagertown, one of the main reasons that we opened there was because, a little bit of hometown passion. But, over the years, our biggest philosophy at our credit union is definitely being an advocate in the community, both for organizations, schools, businesses alike, individuals. And for our 75th year, our team came together and it was very important for us to give back to the communities that have allowed us to serve them for 75 years. Mr. Baker had submitted a request for your scoreboard, and it was literally a no-brainer for us to complete that. We have not been asked by Penncrest for a lot, and we advocate in schools all over. So, it's a pleasure of ours to do this for you, for your athletes. And I know that it covers both your Cambridge and your Sagertown athletes. And then, your teacher, Mrs. Crawl, in Maplewood, had submitted for indoor recess games for the Maplewood Elementary School, so we were happy to fill that. I know tonight, it is not school board approved, but I would like to let you know, your PTO at Sagertown Elementary also submitted a wish for their playground, and we are actually going to be granting that as well. So, they're going to be receiving funding. So, on behalf of One Federal Credit Union, our wish committee, we want to thank you for the opportunity to help your student body, and we hope to do more in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ford, would you like to be, be in this? You should. Go to one.
Hi, it's perfect.
Yes.
Yeah, same here.
It wasn't funny, but no. Did you ever go out and look at it?
Sure. Hey, you know what? I'm okay with that.
That's okay, I don't think so.
Alright, thank you. No, you can be in. Make up games. You're very welcome. You're welcome. Wait till you see something.
Okay. Thank you.
This is for you.
Oh, so much.
This is for you, Professor Field.
Awesome.
And I'll get you where it works.
Yes.
Alright, next on our presentation, student representatives here at Cambridge?
Yep.
Cambridge, okay, great.
Off that pole, guys. Good evening. I'm Ellen Ryan, and I will be updating you on what is going on at Cambridge Springs. In the elementary school last Friday, there was a fab boo! list PTO pregame tick or treat. The kids could wear costumes, of course, and go around getting candy and participating in teacher-led activities. Families also got to vote for the best decorated classroom door. It was amazing and got lots of participation. There's already something new brewing. Friday night, the varsity football team played our Penncrest rivals, Maplewood, at home for their senior night, who put up a good fight, but the Blue Devils walked away with the victory, winning 44 to 20. Saturday night, Cambridge Springs hosted their annual Powder Puff Football Game to give the girls a chance to dominate the field and raise money for Bag Three Time. The event went smoothly with our female football players, male cheerleaders, student coaches, student tech and announcers, and even some student refs. The juniors in the end beat the seniors with a score of 36 to 18. In total, the event raised about $520 and a few canned goods for Bag Three Time. Cambridge athletes sure have a lot going on today. The cross-country team is away at Sagertown, the junior high girls' basketball team is home against Union City, and the boys' soccer team is away at Titusville, while the girls' soccer team is away at Murthyhurst. Also, the girls' volleyball team is home against Maplewood for their senior night. Good luck to all. Tomorrow, the 10th graders will be taking the PSATs. Good luck testing. In a few weeks, Cambridge Springs is looking forward to Red Ribbon Week. This year's theme is "Life as a Movie: Film Drug-Free." Red Ribbon Week is a fun reminder to live a safe and drug-free life as October is Substance Abuse Awareness Month. Please keep in touch and follow us at The Pitchfork on social media to see more of what we've been doing. We freshly published the homecoming edition of The Pitchfork today, which you can see in front of you. Thank you.
Last presentation is Debbie Miller, representing the PAEA in Penncrest.
Thank you. I might also add huge congratulations to Ella. It's funny, even Mrs. Stevens thought that she was like 11th, 12th grade at this point, but she is not. She's a sophomore, and she's serving The Pitchfork as one of our editors this year. And if you were blessed to be at our homecoming assembly, she was also one of the emcees for Bingo Starry Night, our homecoming this year, and she did a fantastic job at that as well. I'm just a little proud of her. Well, good evening, Penncrest Board members, administration, staff, and community members. I am, as you know, Debbie Miller, representing the professionals of your Penncrest Education Association. We are coming fresh off our Staff Development Day yesterday, and I thought possibly many of you wonder what teachers do on these days. Through collaboration with the administration, many mandated trainings occur, which are essential and valuable to the regulated operations of our schools. Take yesterday for instance. We were trained in the latest safety protocols for an emergency in our schools. Through research, the safety experts have found new adjustments to our past protocol. In fact, they have found that no active shooter has breached a locked classroom, thus changing the idea from the past of trying to flee the classroom and the building. They believe that staying hidden in a locked classroom is the safest maneuver in a threatening situation. After this training, many continued to learn about the opioid crisis in our communities. Many of the myths about the origin and typical user were debunked, and more importantly, strategies to intervene were taught. The training reinforced that for many of our students dealing with addiction in their homes or communities, the classroom teacher is likely the first line of support. Teachers need to model acceptance that the opioid crisis is not contained to any socioeconomic or educational level. To deal with this problem, we need to expose it rather than think if we don't talk about it, it will lessen it. Beyond safety and the opioid crisis, many of us then started a five-hour self-paced introduction to artificial intelligence. We learned about teaching ethics and acceptable use of the technology and reasonable ways to incorporate it into education. Through the course, we realized that we cannot just oppose AI. It is a part of the world and the future for our students, and we need to guide them into safe and ethical uses of it. Teachers and educational specialists are always learning and adjusting to the demands of our changing society with technology and with the goal of helping our students navigate the changes within the safe environment of our schools. If helping our students to be lifelong learners and to find success in the real world is our goal, I would close with this. Please remember that I asked, well, maybe begged you, to join me in the fight for smaller class sizes. The most effective way to help students with ever-changing needs is to have time to devote to each one. In large classes, this becomes more than challenging. I hope you are looking every month into finding ways that we can bring those numbers down. Maybe even adding specialty classes and programs that are quarterly or focused on a particular curriculum area, and hiring a specialist, maybe a long-term sub, to teach small focus groups. Or in the elementary, divide the specials into smaller groups. So, for example, while some of the 6th graders are in the gym, the other half might be back in their math class, and then they switch. And that math class would have half as many, and the PE class as well. Or better yet, decide that we are bursting at the seams, and in some grades, add a teacher. I realize that we set a budget back in May, but like many things, we can decide to increase areas within the year when needs or emergencies arise. I think our cramped classrooms are an emergency. Like I pleaded with you a few months ago, join us in the fight, and at the very least revisit this issue often. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Next up, number five, we have one citizen who signed up, Carla Brown, from Cambridge Springs, here to talk about policy.
Hi, good evening. I'm here tonight to discuss policy, in particular, the board's policy committee. For the last nine months or so, there have been no public policy committee meetings that I am aware of. I remember that these meetings occurred on a regular basis and that they were open to the public. I also remember that Dr. Glasspool, a while back, nine months or so, stated the belief that they were not necessary anymore. And I don't think that there's been a public meeting since then. I'm here to ask that that be changed. The Sunshine Law specifically states in its legislative findings, or its reasoning for the law in the first place, that the public has the right to be present at all meetings of agencies and to witness the deliberation, policy formulation, and decision-making of agencies as vital to the democratic process, and secrecy in public affairs undermine faith in our government. It also goes further to define an agency as the body or governing body, and all committees thereof authorized by the body to take official action or render advice on matters of agency business. Agency business is defined as the framing, preparation, making, or enacting of laws, policies, or regulations. This board's own policy, number five entitled "Organization," clearly states, "The board committees are authorized to take action or render advice on district business shall operate in accordance with the provisions of the Sunshine Act." We have had finance committee meetings that are public. We have had education committee meetings that are public, plant and transportation committee meetings that are public, and we have been allowed to make comments and participate in those things. And I think that the time has come for us to actually be allowed to participate once again in policy committees, meetings. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. The education report resolved that the Penncrest Board of School Directors approved items A through K under this report.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried.
Under Facilities and Transportation, number seven, resolved that the Penncrest Board of School Directors approved listed contracted student transportation drivers at the contract cost.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried.
Number eight, under the financial report, resolved that the Penncrest Board of School Directors approved items A through F under that report.
So moved.
Second. Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried.
Number nine, the personnel report, resolved that the Penncrest Board of School Directors approved items A through G under that same report.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried.
Number 10, under the new business, resolved that the Penncrest Board of School Directors approved the following policies as listed.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Hearing done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carried.
Number 11, Board Director Discussion, New Business. Under announcements, we'd like to announce that the board met for executive session on October 7th and the 15th, 2024, for personnel, legal matters, and a confidential student issue. Usually this time of the year, I spend my time giving a superintendent report that focuses on the schools and what's happening in the schools. And I want to start there. I'm not going to spend as much time as I want to get to a more pressing issue to talk about this evening. But I do want to start. First, we have a freshman from Sagertown High School, Mason Jovic, who finished second at states. I mean, second at districts, and that qualified him for the state championship at Penn State University on October 21st, 23rd through the 23rd at the Blue Course down there. And there's an outside chance, well, there's about a 50-50 now from what Mr. Baker says, that the team could go. We're waiting for further district results, so the whole team of Sagertown could go. But quite an accomplishment to make states. And then for a freshman to do that on top of it, I congratulate Mason. I'm actually hoping to potentially be down there one day to watch him. So, congratulations. The LMBA championships, Maplewood will be competing at Erie Vet Stadium on October 26th. I have in my calendar to be there by 4 o'clock, so I know that if you're there by 4, you'll get to see them participate that night at the Vet. We do have a lot of district championships and athletics that are coming up here over the next few weeks, and I wish all of our teams, individuals, you know, students, nothing but the best in the districts, and hopefully we'll get a few more state contestants here in the next few weeks. So, wish them the best. The second part that I want to talk about here tonight is, is safety and security, some issues and updates. We've had, we along with every other district in the, really throughout the nation, has seen uptick in various forms of threats. I've sent one letter out talking about swatting that's happening throughout the country, throughout the state. We get periodic updates from both the Pennsylvania State Police, we get it from Homeland Security, and we've seen an uptick. We've also seen an uptick in student behaviors, student threats. And, and so, I wanted to address some of that here this evening in public. I will be following that up with a, with a letter to the parents and the community that'll be posted on the website here, hopefully by the end of the week. And so, and I want to be, I want to be very clear with how we're going to respond as a district. So, let's start first of all, with what is a threat? A threat is defined as any verbal, written, or physical action expressing intent to harm or endanger others. This includes threats of violence, intimidation, and possession of weapons or potential weapons. And so, that's the, the starting point with a threat. And so, how we're going to approach this is a, basically a three-pronged approach. Our first prong is, we're going to have immediate and severe consequences for safety violations that include a threat. Our responsibility as a, mine as a superintendent, as a board, as administration, clear to our teachers and to all of our employees, is the safety and security of our buildings, and especially our students and our people that work there. And so, we take that very serious. And it's going to be immediate, it's going to be severe, and, and, and we're not, we're not going to back down from that. Also, I want to make sure that we talk about the environment. It's just not in our buildings, it's just not in our classrooms, it's in our gymnasiums, it's on our sports fields, it's on our buses, it's on the way to school, it's on the way back from school. And so, we take that very serious. When a student comes to us in the morning, when they get on that bus, or they walk to school here, here in town here, that's when we, as a district, are responsible for their safety, and the same when they leave our building until they get home. And so, we've had a number, we've had an uptick in our, in our bus incidents. And, and again, you know, I always say this, busing is a privilege for students, not a right. It's a privilege, unless there's a legal document attached to it like an individualized educational plan, which then becomes a right. But overall, it is a privilege, and, and students who are disrupting that bus can be disrupting that driver. And so, it's critical that we address those type of behaviors. We, we are increasing communication with parents regarding behavior issues. I'll have more on that here in a second. We will, we will get our SROs and/or the Pennsylvania State Police and/or the Borough of Cambridge Police Department involved when necessary. And if there's, you know, we've talked, we, as superintendents, not only myself, but all in the whole area, have reached out and talked to the Attorney General's Office. We've talked to various state agencies, local agencies, and we're going to take this very serious. And so, we will, we will press charges where it can be pressed, and we'll let the law enforcement and the, our lawyers determine that. But when, when that happens, when there's a threat of violence, we will pursue all means necessary from a legal perspective. There's a strict prohibition naturally on, on weapons in the school, and, and I'll talk a little bit here in a second about age-appropriate implementation of consequences. Now, that's, that's simply one prong, is that our response. The second prong is, what's our, how do we go about this from a training and helping students learn and being proactive? Because in some ways, this is, this is the more important of the long-term approach. Yes, we have to respond to immediate threats and immediate situations, but what do we do as a district? And so, we are going to do a number of things. First of all, we're going to have school-wide assemblies and meetings, and we're going to, we're going to, we're going to start regular discussions on safety, behavior, consequences. We're going to talk about student training and life skills and in self-regulation. You know, how do, how do we teach students to handle their emotions, to handle conflict management, to handle decision-making? You know, we sit here, and I've been doing this a while now, you know, people make me mad, right? And I'm sure I make people mad. It comes with the territory. But that doesn't mean that I need to be ignorant with people. It means that we can have cordial conversations, and we need to teach our students that from a very young age, of how to do that. So, that, that's part of that training that we are responsible for. And unfortunately, or fortunately, the schools have become the place where that training takes place. And so, it's our responsibility, you know, when Debbie's talking about what's going on in the classroom, not only are we teaching the three Rs, right? We're teaching a lot more than that in our classrooms, and so, it's important that we do that. I don't want to discount mental health. Mental health is, is real. We acknowledge that, as you saw the board tonight. The board tonight, we added another partnership. We are constantly looking for partnerships in the, in the area of mental health. Not only our local district, we're also looking at it in a broader perspective through the IU. And we, we've been talking about this, because every school's experiencing this right now. And so, we want to continue to do that, continue to provide placement, which I, I think there's a very good solid base here. Mrs. Fieldy's done a lot of work in that area, continues to do a lot of work in that area. So, and then finally, parents in the community. And, parents, I'm going to be, I'm going to be pretty blunt here. You know, we, we need your help, and we need you to parent. We need parents to step up and be the parents. This is a partnership. This is a partnership between the school, it's between our students, our parents, and our community. And when all, when we're, when we're functioning together as one team, we can have a wonderful school system, and we have wonderful educators, and we have wonderful students, and we have wonderful communities. Now, we just need to, we need to refine some things, and we need our parents. And, parents, I'm asking you to talk to your students, you know, discuss the, discuss the seriousness of these type of threats, you know? It's not appropriate when somebody makes you mad to say...